Good evening and welcome everyone to the January 25th, 2021 City Council Meeting. Thank you for joining us in this remote meeting format we're using in response to Governor Brown's Stay Home Save Lives Order. This format enables the City Council to meet here from the community and take care of business while keeping its members, staff, and the public safe. We have a full agenda tonight and there are several announcements that I just want to clarify before we begin. Anyone wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching the livestream available on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following the access instructions listed for this meeting on the Public Webcast and Meeting Materials webpage. Tonight's agenda includes a public forum. And I see we have a good list of folks who have signed up. So if you wish to participate in the public forum and haven't already done so, please raise your virtual hand now to join the speakers queue in one of two ways. For those viewing the meeting on a computer, laptop, or other device, click once on the hand icon. For those listening to the meeting on a phone, press star. We will continue to accepting raised hands until 7:35. Meeting moderator will unraise or disallow any requests to speak that are made after the deadline. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. And as Nia just mentioned, we are now allowing speakers the option of turning on your video when you're called on to provide testimony. As each speaker's turn is announced, the meeting moderator will temporarily promote you to panelist status, and you can unmute and turn on your video if you wish. Please be aware that this may take a second, so the transition can be a little longer while the moderator makes this happen. Also, we encourage you as you as you use this new increased access to do so in a responsible way. Our intent is simply to be able to see one another's faces as testimony is given. But any misuse of the platform or violation of the council's code of conduct will result in our immediately cutting you off. And finally, thank you all for, you know, this is no longer an innovation. We've been using this format for getting close to a year now, so it's very familiar. And I think we're all eager to meet in person, but thank you for joining us virtually. And with that, we can begin with our first, our first item is committee reports and items of interest. Do I have any counselors who have something to share? It looks like Counselor grows.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of you have seen emails from the newly formed Eugene Wildfire Preparedness Coalition, which is a group of neighborhood leaders that are formed under the Neighborhood Leaders Council. It involves multiple neighborhoods, units, and it's it's all about reducing and mitigating the threat of wildfire here in our community following the Holiday Farm Fire. This group is highly motivated. They have some really talented people on board. They have a soils expert, GIS mapping person. They have an associate professor from Oregon State University in Forestry Department with a firefighting background who specializes in mitigation. I think it's something very important for our community, and I know that they're wanting to approach council and talk about the work they're doing. They're already applying for some grants, and they are working with Eugene Springfield Fire as well as Parks and Open Space. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. I fully support what they're trying to do. I think we need it in our community, not just in our hills, but in all parts of our community where fire spread is is a threat. Thank you.
Start, Counselor Semple.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to put a lot of light on to something I think is very exciting that the city has finally have some guidelines for camping. We don't really want to say, oh, everyone go camping. That's not the point. But we have guidelines now of how you can stay if you don't disturb things like with garbage or your tents too close together. You know, be respectful. So I think this is really exciting. I'm wondering if maybe we could make a card with bullet points of these guidelines. I know I've gotten the long email press release a bunch of times, which I'm grateful for. But it's it's very extensive and I started doing it myself, just making a little bullet list that we could hand out to people because guidelines don't work if people don't know about them. So I'd like to see us do some real education, maybe with our outreach team or through service organizations. And I believe that the the campers that were or are at WJ that were having some some difficulties, have they been checked in on again? Because, you know, we're getting a lot of concern about a possible sweep. And I think we had an email that said we were not planning to sweep anything at WJ. So is there an answer for that?
I don't have any new information today that I didn't send out to you towards the end of last week. So last I heard, that wasn't happening, but I would want to check with our team tonight. I can let you know.
I think that would be great because there's a lot of of concern and energy. And if it's not needed in that venue right now, it would be great to divert that to something more effective. But thank you very much to the advocates, the neighborhood groups who have been working really hard to get some guidelines going and to to city staff and execs who got this going. And Mayor and Council, thank you all really, really so very much. It's it's never enough, but this is a really big step. And thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keating.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to echo Counselor Semple's applause to staff and to council and to leadership for for doing the right thing at Washington Jefferson Park. Appreciate that. And I'd like to see see more of those creative collaborative solutions. Thank you. I want to thank council in regards to the unanimous vote we took last week. And in particular, thank Counselors Yeh, Counselor Cyret, and Counselor Zalinka for for working on a revised, updated resolution condemning hate in our community and white nationalism, white supremacy, the siege on our Capitol, the insurrection, and the list goes on. And I thank this council for standing united. And I've heard from a great many constituents echoing that that thanks as well. And thank you. We've had a busy inbox. Is it always like this? Okay, great. My committee work has started today. Counselor Cyret and I participated in the Human Services Committee and last week, the El Rapa Committee. And I am pleased to announce that I am carrying over Counselor Taylor's Budget Committee appointee to the El Rapa Budget Board, Lisa Arkin of Beyond Toxics. It's on top of mind tonight because of the obvious agenda item. So the El Rapa Board has yet to 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 ratify that particular carryover, but I don't suspect there'll be any issues. I thank Lisa for her service and Ruth Demler for many years served in that in that capacity. So I'm proud to to that Lisa Arkin expressed great interest for continuing to serve in that in that realm. Looking forward to a great night, council, and thank you to the community members who signed up to testify.
Thank you. And I just have a I have a I have a quick comment, actually building on the work session that we just completed this evening about middle housing, which is that I joined a national group, Mayors and CEOs for Housing Investment, and we have our our policy platform meeting tomorrow to talk about housing. And key to that platform is treating housing as infrastructure and including housing production and preservation in any infrastructure plan developed by Congress or the administration, setting ambitious goals for housing production and preservation to stimulate the private market. So we have an opportunity, I think, now in the coming with this administration to actually see some greater investment at the federal level and on carrying our needs into that conversation. And so just, you know, we're all all across the nation talking about these same needs to build housing and to stabilize people who are homeless. So just wanted you to know that work is going on. And with that, I think we're ready to put a motion on the table around the consent calendar. But Counselor Zalika, yes?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to call Item C for LRT.
Okay, perfect. So Counselor Yeh, you want to put a motion on the table?
I do, and City Manager, if going forward, if we can just remember to leave these items off the consent calendar since we pull them every single time, that would be great. So I move to approve the items on Consent Calendar One. I, oh, wait, I move to approve Items A, B, and D on Consent Calendar One.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, seven, eight. Thank you. And now Counselor Zalika, would you like to speak to Item C?
Yeah, this is our ongoing information that we provide to the community about what we're doing on affordable housing and animal housing. Right, Claire? And I would just like staff to, this isn't a new project, but it is a LRT project that has been in existence. So maybe they could address this a little bit and talk about the the cool thing that we're doing in this with this with this low-income rental housing property tax exemption on North Garfield.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Ellen May Galloway from Community Development. Thank you for allowing me to highlight a third existing St. Vincent de Paul development this year that applied for a low-income rental housing property tax exemption, or LRT. Council approved two St. Vincent de Paul LRTs on January 11th for developments that have provided affordable housing to the community for over 25 years. Tonight, council will consider a LRT for Garfield Park, which St. Vincent de Paul has managed for about 16 years. Before I describe the development, I'll give a brief overview of the LRT program. The LRT program was adopted by council in 1990 and is a partnership between the city and the 4J and Bethel School Districts. The city and the school districts renewed their support for the LRT program last year by extending the program through 2030. The LRT program provides a 20-year property tax exemption for rental housing developments with residents earning no more than 60% of the area median income. The savings from the LRT must be applied directly to lowering the rents at the development. LRTs can also be renewed. Since 1990, 34 LRTs have been awarded assisting over 1,400 rental units to maintain lower rents. Tonight, council is asked to approve a LRT for Garfield Park, a mobile home park located on North Garfield Street in the Trainsong neighborhood. It has nine stick-built, income-restricted apartments, six mobile homes owned and rented by St. Vincent de Paul, and 12 spaces for privately-owned mobile homes. The LRT requested is only for the 15 income-restricted units owned by St. Vincent de Paul. At the property, the proposed rents range from $331 per month for a studio and $612 per month for a three-bedroom unit. The proposed rents would not be possible without the LRT. Let me know if you have questions, and thank you for your consideration.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for that. This is a very cool project that's continuing on with with the types of incentives that actually create low and affordable housing, which is the type of stuff that I think we need to be focusing on. This is how we're going to get more actual affordable housing units in Eugene. Unfortunately, this is what it takes to get to get there is to do these property taxes. It's the type of property tax exemption that I like as opposed to a lot of the MPTs, which I don't think are necessary. Thank you for the presentation.
Counselor Cyret.
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize to everyone for the distraction of the dog on the lap. But he's super barking while I want to talk. So just to be clear, what Jennifer was suggesting to the city manager and staff was that we would like these items that involve our support of affordable housing projects to just be a separate action item rather than part of the consent calendar because we want to highlight them and and make them obvious to the community that these are happening, which is more difficult when they're just included on a consent calendar agenda. So that was the suggestion we would like to make.
I got that sort of loud and clear. I was actually going to ask about that. So I think what would be good is just to talk through how we're going to do that because I'd I'd hate for Ellen to to be here for two more hours until 9:45 to give you that little thing. So maybe we do it on a Wednesday or some other different way.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. When there's an abatement in an incentive like this and and folks have a pathway to to be able to have a roof over their head that's affordable and they could be proud of, perhaps it's the four-legged friend on 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 Counselor Cyret's lap, or it's the four-legged friend who's watching me do all these meetings on Zoom. But are there are there ways to 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 protect the 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 four-legged family members from when when we when we have an incentive? Can the the municipality say that whether, I mean, obviously, service animals can be companion animals, but any any any, are there, can we can we waive restrictions for pets? So those most in need can have their four-legged members of their family with them safely at at these homes?
Did you want me to answer that? I think that most of our affordable housing developments do allow pets and certainly service animals, and several residents have service animals.
Counselor Zalika?
Yeah, my four-legged family member sleeps through these meetings, so. With regard to where and when they would be on on the agenda, my suggest, I I think these being on Mondays is really important. And I totally agree with not having staff stick around for the whole thing. I think maybe the appropriate place for them to be is right before the consent calendar or some somewhere like that or immediately thereafter. But I don't want staff hanging around all night for this. So we don't want them at the end, but having them be at the beginning, staff can make the presentations, describe what we're doing. And, you know, and we can all applaud, and then and then they can go on with their evening. So if we just put them at the beginning of the Monday agenda, I think that would be more appropriate. I don't want to see them shuffled off at Wednesday. I don't think very many people participate on Wednesdays because it's in the middle of the day.
Okay, thank you. Let's put a motion on the table to vote for Item C.
Thank you. I move to approve Item C on Consent Calendar One.
Second. All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you. That passes eight to nothing. Thank you very much, and thank you for that, poor Ellen. That's it's always it's always inspiring to hear more about more affordable housing. We are now ready for the public forum, which is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official. When it is your turn, the moderator will announce your name and promote you to panelist. Please state your name clearly, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known, before beginning your comments. Again, each person will have two and a half minutes to speak. If you are watching the meeting, the timer should be visible. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light and beep indicate the end of the two and a half minutes. When your time has concluded, the moderator will demote you back to attendee status and move on to the next speaker. For those who have connected to the meeting via phone and don't have the benefit of seeing the timer, please be aware that your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. And also, council has committed to limiting the time of the public forum to a total of 90 minutes. And I see that we have 34 attendees. So just those of you who don't need to use your whole two and a half minutes will enable more people to speak in that allotted time. So thank you very much for coming tonight. And with that, I am going to turn it over to the moderator to call on our first speaker.
Thank you, Mayor. First speaker is Cascadia Wildlands, followed by Brendan Fingle.
Hello, can y'all hear me? Great. Thanks so much for providing me an opportunity to testify. So my name is Dylan Plummer. I am the grassroots organizer with Cascadia Wildlands. I'm also a university of Oregon alumni and recently a a new board member with the Amazon Neighborhood Association, and finally, a resident of Ward Two. I'm testifying on behalf of the Fossil Free Eugene Coalition, and I want to start by voicing my gratitude to council for passing a resolution against white supremacy last week and for y'all temporarily allowing for urban camping during this global pandemic. I appreciate the work that y'all are doing there. So because you've heard testimony on the climate impacts of fossil fuels, I wanted to provide maybe a little more nuanced perspective and a more personal one. So as someone who suffers from chronic respiratory illness and as a renter unable to transition away from appliances that burn frack gas, moving to our city to renewables and away from polluting gas is incredibly important to me and my health. In the past year, a body of research has emerged demonstrating the massive impacts that the combustion of gas inside homes can have on air quality and in turn, human health. A recent study showed that homes with gas stoves have 50% to over 400% higher nitrogen dioxide levels in their indoor air than homes with electric stoves, which can lead to heart failure and asthma. Another study found that children in homes with gas stoves have a 42% increased risk of asthma. Knowing that the stove and the hot water heater that I use every day poses a serious risk to my health and exacerbates my life-threatening health condition is extremely disturbing, to say the least. I kind of wish I hadn't read those reports. Additionally, as a somewhat recent graduate, I've experienced the job insecurity that plagues our community. As such, I wanted to highlight the economic benefit of taking action to transition our city away from fossil fuels. A study by UCLA found that electrifying California's buildings over the next 25 years would create eight times as many jobs as might be lost in the gas industry and support an additional 100,000 full-time jobs in construction, manufacturing, and the energy sector every year. Obviously, Eugene isn't the state of California, but we can expect to see job numbers for our city proportional to our population and housing stock. As someone who hopes to own a home someday, and I know y'all were talking about it before the meeting started and how crazy the market is, I want to highlight that the recent economic analysis in Seattle from Rocky Mountain Institute show that homeowners of homes built without gas hookups.
Thank you, Dylan. Your time has concluded. Next is Brendan, followed by Ben.
Thank you for providing me an opportunity to give testimony. My name is Brendan Fingle, and I'm a member of the EG 350 Club at South Eugene High School. I live in Ward Two. I'm a freshman, and I'm deeply worried about our climate emergency. As a young person, I'm forced to watch powerlessly as adults turn a blind eye to the crisis that we are facing. This is your opportunity to show you truly care about the environment. I'm here to testify about the ongoing use and expansion of natural gas and other fossil fuel infrastructure in the city of Eugene. As the climate crisis worsens, I believe it is important for the city to be taking extensive measures to eliminate its carbon emissions and provide for a just transition to renewable energies. As such, I expect that the leadership of the city of Eugene will meet the goals of Climate Recovery Ordinance adopted in 2014, modified in 2016, by the year 2030. Counselors, you are faced with a unique opportunity to reimagine Eugene's unique future. In your efforts to renegotiate the city's franchise agreement with Northwest Natural, you have the opportunity to forge a path towards a just transition in this city. As you reflect upon this new opportunity, I expect you to realize who's being mostly affected by climate change, which is lower-class and less privileged people. I urge you to consider what actions must be necessary to remedy and help those people in need. We are at a crossroads, and our small town is looking for you for leadership. And so I ask you to refuse to sign a new franchise agreement with Northwest Natural. And so I ask you to refuse to sign a new franchise agreement with Northwest Natural unless they agree to the terms that put us back on track to meet our CRO goals and in line with the desire of the constituents that which you serve. It is the city's legal and moral responsibility to do everything in its power to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions in line with the recommendations of the best available science and invest in building community resilience with community freed from resilience on fossil fuels. As such, in addition to renegotiating our franchise agreement with Northwest Natural, at the very least, I'm requesting that the city councillor pa- pass a series of ordinances to make mandate the transition of all utilities to one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty, ban the construction of all new fossil fuels in the city, and levy a fee on Northwest Natural and other climate polluters to create a fund to transition low-income and historically marginalized communities from frack gas to electric appliances. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ben, followed by Olivia.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
At the last meeting, I heard councillor Clark try to compare unarmed BLM protesters who spent most of last year protesting police brutality to a largely white riot that stormed the US Capitol Building, resulting in the death of a police officer. It is currently being called a failed coup attempt. This was unacceptable of a public official. Some of the people who participated in the riot Capitol Building are from here in Oregon. Many of them have spent the entire summer counter-protesting the BLM protests. And many are members of racist organizations that we saw represented at the failed insurrection attempt at our Capitol Building. Also, many were at the failed insurrection attempt of the Oregon Capitol Building last year in Salem. Let me make it very clear, there is no neutral position when it comes to white supremacy. Either you are an advocate for equal rights, or you are complicit in a system that values one group of people's lives over another. By not taking a stronger stance on white supremacy and allowing the Eugene police to create two standards for protests, you have created an environment that actually fosters white supremacy. This lack of accountability has allowed racist organizations in your community to recruit new members and to spread racist propaganda and hate. This and as a result, the level of violence against your BIPOC community has steadily increased. This is a fundamental failure of a combination of individuals, the Eugene Police, the city council, the mayor's office, the city manager's office, to fundamentally realize the one of the biggest threats that your community faces. Historically, what maintains systems of white supremacy is a combination of violence, intimidation, and fear. But it also requires one more thing, the complacency of the people in power who benefit from the system as it currently is. In his writing, King explains that people that he's most disappointed with are not the racists, it's the white liberals who claim to support him, but they stand by and do nothing. I'm calling on the city council to not only denounce white supremacy, I'm calling on you to create real consequences for people who have ties to white supremacy and who are sympathetic to racist organizations and individuals. Shortly after the meeting, I wrote an email to councillor Clark demanding that he denounce white supremacy and that he write a formal apology to the BIPOC community or resign. He has done, eh eh at the time of the writing of the statement, he had done none of those. So I'm calling on the city council and the mayor's office to hold a formal vote, to have councillor Clark removed from his positions of authority and power within the city and to conduct a formal investigation into his affiliate.
Thank you, Ben. Your time has concluded. Next is Olivia, followed by Peter.
My name is Olivia Ross, and I'm in Ward Two. Hello, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to let the community voice its concerns. I'm a senior at South Eugene High School and in in Earth Guardians three fifty club. I'm asking you, the city council, to take action and prevent Eugene from further pollution. Compared to Los Angeles's smog, Eugene has fresh air. Though, air pollution is everywhere due to fracking and fossil fuel consumption. Millions of people globally do not survive harsh conditions of air pollution. I am worried that one day Eugene will have a smog similar to California, and many people will get hurt. If Eugene were to continue a fossil fuel infrastructure, it would only add fuel to the fire that is raging in our atmosphere. When I look out onto our beautiful Lamont Valley that I call home, I see trees in the hills in our distance, and they have white haze around them. I'm scared that if fossil fuel energy were to continue Eugene um in Eugene, then when I'm old and have grand grandchildren, they won't be able to see across the valley or even see the buttes from afar. That is why I urge you to transition to one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty and stop new fossil fuel infrastructure. The time is now to levy fees on companies like Northwest Natural and prevent them from harming the place and people we call home. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next is Peter, followed by James.
Um, hello, my name is Peter Ralph. I live in Ward Eight, and thanks for listening. As some of the other speakers have said, I'm very concerned about Eugene's greenhouse gas emissions, especially the use and expansion of um natural grass infrastructure. And um I urge the council to do everything in your power to reduce the use of fossil fuels in Eugene. One of the things that is in your power is to refuse to sign the franchise agreement with North Northwest Natural until they meet the targets in the Climate Recovery Ordinance. Um, I hope you do that. Thanks. That's all.
Thank you. Next is James, followed by Maddie. James, please unmute.
Sorry, I thought you took care of that. Uh, Mayor, Council, and City Manager, this is Jim New, uh, Ward Seven. Northwest Frack Gas and all the carbon majors are concerned with global fuel switching and trying to protect their future. They have known for over thirty years that their products contribute to climate change and pollute indoor and outdoor air spaces. You have heard this from us for four years, and scientists have been telling us for forty years that the combustion of fossil fuels is warming the planet. But Northwest Frack Gas does not care about human health as they are looking to expand with a thirty-inch one hundred and twenty-six mile-long trail west pipeline from central Oregon to northwest Portland across Mount Hood's southern flank. They have been gaslighting their industry with talk of green renewable gas that will reduce frack gas by almost twenty percent and about frack gas being a bridge fuel. They have put our cus- out customer mailers stating that the city of Eugene is going to take away your gas. They are pitting your constituents against the city by holding you hostage with a franchise agreement. When threatened with restrictions, they react with aggression. This is the sign of a privileged company having to deal with its dire future and a history of using our atmosphere as a sewer. Is this the kind of partner the city was expecting from a large lever shareholder? A large contributor of local greenhouse gas emissions that would help the city reach its Climate Recovery Ordinance goals by reducing its emissions? Is Northwest Frack Gas a Eugene climate collaborator the city wants to enter into a ten- or twenty-year contract with? One who lies and badmouths its partners? I think not. I think it's time to let the supremacists go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Maddie, followed by Devon.
Hello, my name is Madeline Blum, and I'm a resident of Ward Three in Eugene. Mayor Venice, city councillors, and city manager Midary, thank you for providing this opportunity for public testimony. I was born and raised in Eugene, and I believe that we can be a model city for the rest of the world if we face the climate crisis. My well-being, my family's well-being, and the well-being of all future generations is at stake when we fail to act on the climate change. I believe a bright future is ahead of us if we seize the opportunity now to transition into a fossil-free world. I am testifying on behalf of the Fossil Free Eugene Coalition, a growing movement in Eugene and across the region advocating for a just transition to renewable energy specifically focused on working towards the electrification of buildings as they provide a clear mechanism for dramatically reducing the greenhouse gas emissions of our city, our state, and our region. Every major study on our on meeting our climate goals from the United Nations to the Obama administration to the Oregon Global Warming Commission's calls for running buildings on clean energy rather than fossil fuels and combining that with efficiency to reduce energy waste and lower costs for building owners and the overall system. Transitioning to renewable to renewables is imperative to meeting our climate goals and will pr- will provide benefits for our local community, uh, economy, public health, and safety, and mark a first step for Eugene to combat environmental injustices in our community. Oregon State agencies estimate the energy efficiency improvements such as improving heating, cooling, and weatherization in homes can save one hundred thirteen million dollars a year in utility costs for low-income households. We support you to reimagine Eugene's energy future and make our city the example of climate leadership that it should be. In your efforts to renegotiate the city's franchise agreement with Northwest Natural, you have the opportunity to forge a path toward a just transition in the city. We support you to use this opportunity to start a process to completely decarbonize our city and equitably move toward commu- to move our community into the new decade. We are at a crossroads, and our town is looking to for leadership, and so I ask that you please refuse to sign a new franchise agreement with Northwest Naturals unless they agree to terms that put us on track to meet our CRO goals and are in line with the desire of the constituents that you serve. In addition to renegotiating our franchise agreement with Northwest Natural, I'm requesting that the city council pass a ser-
Thank you. Your time has concluded. Next is Devon, followed by Eloise.
Hello, uh, thank you for the opportunity to present testimony today. My name is Devon Kessner, and I'm a Eugene resident of Warren Ward One and a climate and energy attorney for Breach Collective, an Oregon-based nonprofit. I'm testifying on behalf of the Fossil Free Eugene Coalition, a growing movement of community members advocating for a just transition to renewable energy. The council has heard from this coalition and the community that the risks of frack gas are unacceptable on many grounds, including climate justice, public health and safety, and economics. Recognizing this, the Council and Sustainability Commission have been analyzing legally and economically feasible pathways for limiting and prohibiting frack gas for years. The pending franchise agreement renewal with Northwest Natural is one avenue where the city possesses authority to accelerate the transition away from fossil fuels. And the city should refuse to sign a renewable renewal that does not take advantage of that opportunity. The city should also pursue avenues not reliant on good-faith negotiations with a public utility whose interests are deeply at odds with the city's climate goals. The city should pursue ordinances to protect the health and safety of its residents against frack gas, to ensure widespread electrification of buildings, and to develop a fund for equitably transitioning the community to renewables. While there are legal nuances involved with all of these actions, the city certainly possesses home rule authority to take action in these realms. More broadly, I stand with other members of the community and calling for the city to ban all new fossil fuel infrastructure, including new gas hookups, mandate a transition to hundred percent renewable energy, and utilize the ongoing franchise agreement negotiations with Northwest Natural to develop a fund for transitioning the community to renewables. I note that just this past week, the Sustainability Commission passed a resolution in support of our campaign. The city is partway there, having extensively analyzed why and how it needs to take these actions to meet its climate goals. Our coalition is now calling for the follow-through. Thank you.
Thanks. Next is Eloise, followed by Sahara.
Good evening, and thank you for your time and for this opportunity to pro- to provide testimony. My name is Eloise Parrish-Miller, and I've lived in Ward One of Eugene for my whole life. I'm currently a student at the University of Oregon and a member of the Eugene Have of the Sunrise Movement. I'm here to support the demands and vision of the Fossil Free Eugene Coalition because I believe in our city's potential to move beyond discourse and be a leader in bold and material climate action. And we're at a moment of great opportunity to do so when it comes to ending the expansion of frack gas usage and transitioning our community to renewable energy. Northwest Natural may be confident in their financial resources and think that they can get away with tricking our community into letting them continue to contribute to climate destruction. But at the end of the day, decisions about our community's future are not theirs to make. That right belongs to the people, and your responsibility as our elected representatives is to ensure the integrity of that right. Um, and I hope to see you do so. Thank you very much.
Next is Sahara, followed by David.
Can you hear me? Mayor Venice, city councillors, and city manager Midary, thank you for providing me with an opportunity to give testimony. My name is Sahara Valentine, and I'm a leader of ED three fifty, a club at South Eugene High School which aims to combat climate change through civics, education, and activism. I live in Ward Two. I was born with asthma and hospitalized for it at a young age. Still now, I remember one night waking up to an asthma attack and not being able to breathe. I don't know if any of you have been in that position, but it's really scary. Recently, like Dylan, I've been learning more about how gas appliances affect health. One study found that children in homes with gas stoves have a forty-two percent higher chance of having asthma symptoms. And another in Australia attributed twelve percent of all childhood asthma burdens to gas stoves. A UCLA study commissioned by the CR Club showed that exhaust from gas appliances produces carbon monoxide and nitrogen dioxide exposures that exceed national and California standards in ninety percent of homes modeled. The impact from gas appliances is worse in smaller households, especially smaller apartments, disproportionately harming low-income people. As the CR Club put it, "The air quality inside nearly every apartment was so bad that it would be illegal if measured outside." All of these findings are incredibly shocking and disturbing. For my health and safety, as well as the health and safety of others, I ask you to do everything in your power to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions in line with the recommendations of the best available science and invest in building climate resilient communities freed from reliance on fossil fuels. As such, in addition to renegotiating our franchise agreement with Northwest Natural, I'm requesting that the city council pass a series of ordinances to mandate the transition of all utilities in the city to one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty, ban the construction of all new fossil fuel infrastructure in the city, and levy a fee on Northwest Natural and other climate polluters to create a fund to transition low-income and historically marginalized communities from frack gas to electric appliances and to retrofit these homes to increase efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David, followed by Danny.
Mayor Venice, councillors, my name is David Monk. I am a resident of Ward Two um and currently one of the co-chairs for the Neighborhood Leaders Council. I'm following up on a letter that we sent to you all on Friday. Uh, councillor Groves introduced the Coalition, which is a new committee of the NLC, to you in his comments this evening. What I'd like to do is make the case for a council's work session focused on improving our wildfire readiness and response capabilities. According to Fire Chief Heppel, and I quote, "Had the strong easterly winds on September eighth continued for another twelve hours, the Holiday Farm Fire could have entered Springfield and Eugene," unquote. If you've seen the pictures from Tallinn and Phoenix, you know what an out-of-control fire can do in an urban setting. We are asking the city council to schedule a work session at the earliest possible date to explore three objectives. Firstly, to determine what the city can do with existing resources, including that portion of the community safety payroll tax that is allocated to fire and EMS, to rapidly develop a comprehensive wildfire preparedness plan for Eugene. Secondly, to explore what actions the council might take to apply for and effectively leverage state and federal wildfire funding. Uh, we attached a um report from this Oregon State Emergency Board to that email. As you'll see in that, millions of dollars are being allocated over the next four months at the end of this biennium for wildfire preparedness. Uh, some of that commute for community preparedness. We believe the city uh could access quite a bit of that money. Our coalition is in the process of accessing some of that monies. Thirdly, to explore how neighborhood associations and other community-based organizations can support and enhance the city's efforts. The NLC and the wildfire preparedness coalition are ready to work with city staff and to use our communications networks to educate and engage the public in this important work. I thank you for your time and consideration of this request.
Thanks. Next is Danny, followed by Fucy.
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to give testimony. Uh, my name is Danny Noonan, and I'm a resident of Ward One. I'm also the Climate Policy and Legislative Affairs Manager at I'm also the Climate Policy and Legislative Affairs Manager at Beyond Toxicx and, uh. Before I start, I just wanted to say that I appreciated seeing, uh, councillor Saretz Vasingy on camera. Um, I had two of them for sixteen happy years of my childhood, so it was nice to see one again. Um, but I'm here to lend my voice to other people who've testified tonight as part of the Fossil Free Eugene Coalition and to. Support their demands that the city swiftly phase out fossil fuels using all tools at its disposal. Uh, including through the ongoing franchise agreement negotiations with Northwest Natural. Um, specifically, I wanted to point the council's attention to two recent developments. At the state level that really underline both the stakes and the opportunities that are at the core of this issue. Uh, so regarding the stakes. Uh, OSU's Oregon Climate Change Research Institute recently released its fifth biennial Oregon Climate Assessment. Which paints a very detailed and very disturbing picture of the future of Oregon's climate if we do not do our part to tackle global warming. And this includes more wildfire events like we saw last September and other cascading natural disasters. Um, but those impacts are not a foregone conclusion and there are opportunities to move this city and this state towards a stable climate and. In that vein, I want to point the council towards the leadership currently being shown by, uh, many of our state legislators and. This includes, uh, the Oregon Senate Democrats who, uh, recently released their legislative agenda for this session. And that agenda includes an explicit commitment to transitioning to one hundred percent renewable energy. And promoting related rural jobs in that sector. Um, this also includes a number of bills that have been introduced this legislative session such as House Bill twenty-nine ninety-five. Which would mandate one hundred percent clean energy by the year twenty thirty-five. And House Bill twenty-four eighty-eight, which would require consideration of climate impacts and greenhouse gas emissions in land use decisions. By local governments such as the city of Eugene. So, the demands of the Fossil Free Eugene Coalition are entirely in line with movements at the state level. Uh, not to mention the re- resolution recently passed by Eugene Sustainability Coalition. Um, so whether we look at the stakes or opportunities, there's no reason for this council not to seize every opportunity. Uh, and I therefore urge the demands of the Fossil Free Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Fucy, followed by Ozzy.
Hello, city councillors and mayor, um, can you hear me? Um, thank you for providing me, providing me with an opportunity to give testimony. My name is Madeline Cowan. I live in Ward Three on occupied stolen Kalakia land. I also work with Firefighters United for Safety Ethics and Ecology, also known as FUCY. Um, a local nonprofit organization who works closely with wildland firefighters and communities impacted by wildfire. This past wildfire season across the west, um, the ignitions spread at tremendous speeds. They grew to enormous sizes that overwhelmed the abilities of firefighters to stop or put them out. And as we witnessed this year, the world's largest, most technically trained, well-funded and equipped firefighting force with near limitless funding. Could not halt the climate-driven wildfires in urban configurations. That killed dozens of people across the west, destroyed homes by the thousands and increasingly incinerated. Uh, entire neighborhoods. Um, up in McKenzie, um, river, we saw are just really close to all of us in Eugene, we saw. Many, uh, homes and lives devastated. Um, so climate ca- chaos has really sparked this wildfire, uh, crisis in the west. And we know that fracked gas is exacerbating climate, this climate crisis that drove these wildfires. And is endangering the people and communities and also the wildland firefighters of Eugene and beyond. I'm here today to advocate for the city of Eugene to take bold action to mitigate the worst impacts of this climate crisis. And I expect that with bold leadership from the city, uh, we will meet our, the climate goals of, uh. The goals of the Climate Recovery Ordinance. The future safety of communities and wildland firefighters alike, I urge the city to meet the demands that so many people have been bringing up today. Shifting from renewable, shifting to renewables, banning fossil food infrastructure. Um, and levying a tax to increase the franchise fee with Northwith, Northwest Natural. Excuse me, I ate a bunch of hot food earlier and so my, like, it's hard to speak a little bit, um. Uh, so as fossil fuels are burned in the city, it adds to this climate crisis and it, and it, this increases the wildfire crisis and hazards. So I'm speaking on behalf of wildland firefighters, um, in my organization and I, um, and also the low income community residents within. Um, within the area that will bear the brunt of the increased fire risk and hazards faced with climate crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ozzy, followed by Avery.
Hello, my name is Ozzy and I'm a sixth grader. It's outrageous that the city's. Revision to the animal shelter requirement doesn't allow people to have a dog in a vehicle or a makeshift shelter. Those rules don't make sense. Some people choose to live in cars like a friend of mine who wants to live in an ambulance. I've watched these TikToks where people are living in school buses with their dogs. I'm not sure if they're in, if the new rules would mean that you can't live in a tent, but if that. But if that is the case, that doesn't make sense either be. Cause maybe you want to go backpacking for a year and you want to bring your dog with you. You wouldn't want to leave your dog at home all alone for a year or more. Also, some people don't have a house or a car and they don't have a choice because they're being denied housing. And they want to have a dog as a companion. It's scary when people. And cops are moving you around from place to place and you don't have a permanent home. It's not a person's fault that they don't have an adequate shelter for their animal. If I asked a houseless person if they would rather live in a house, I'm ninety-nine percent sure they would say yes. And that they would want to live their, their, that they want their pet to have a nice cozy home. That's what I think they would say. I have two pets at home. And if some random guy with a gun came and took squeaky and fluffy my guinea pigs away. I would be devastated. They're two of my best friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Avery, followed by Heidi.
Hello, my name is Avery McCray. I live in Ward One and I'm a sophomore at South Eugene High School. I'll start by telling you the power that you hold. You have the power to create the change I need to see in order to have a livable future. You have the power to shift our city off of fossil fuels. You also have the obligation to do everything you can to take the steps needed to get there. Your children, your grandchildren, your great, great, great grandchildren will forever be affected by the decisions that we make now. Here are the specific things that I ask of you today. I ask that you ban all new infrastructure of fossil fuels. I ask that you levy a fee on Northwest Natural to create a. A fund that will help lower income communities easily shift off of natural gas utilities and on to clean energy. And finally, I ask that you mandate the transition of all utilities in the city to a hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty. I would like to end by saying I really appreciate the time given to discuss this tonight and I recognize your public service. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Heidi, followed by Sophie.
Hi, my name is Heidi and I'm a Eugene resident. I live in Ward Two. I'm speaking in solidarity with Fossil Free Eugene, a coalition of local grassroots organizations calling for the end of fracked gas in Eugene. And you've heard them before, but I'll just restate the demands. One, uh, is to mandate the to- transition of all utilities in Eugene to a hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty. Two, to ban the construction of all new fossil fuel infrastructure in Eugene. And three, levy a fee on Northwest Natural and other climate polluters to create a justice fund to transition low income. And historically marginalized communities from fa- fracked gas to electric appliances and to retrofit these homes to increase efficiency. There are many reasons to move away from fossil fuels and fracked gas like other speakers have discussed, um, but I'll just mention a few more. Natural gas is fracked gas. Um, and through, and though it produces less CO2, the fracking process produces a lot of methane, which is eighty-four times as potent as CO2. Fracked gas also creates indoor toxic air and exhaust from gas appliances. That can be especially toxic in smaller households and apartments disproportionately affecting low income people. Communities of color are disproportionately exposed to higher levels of pollution. Due to where neighborhoods of color are located closer to toxic waste facilities, highways and industrial areas, a result of a long history of zoning ordinances and redlining. Additionally, continuing to emit greenhouse gases amplifies a wide range of climate hazards. And creates even more dire living conditions for the unhoused. As a result, low-income communities, communities of color and unhoused folks are more likely to be exposed to pollutants. Amplifying respiratory and cardiovascular illnesses and increasing vulnerability to COVID nineteen. If we truly care for everyone in the Eugene community, it is clear that Northwest Natural and fossil fuels are not the answer. Please uphold your commitment to meet the city's climate goals and take initiative in helping us move towards a livable future for everyone.
Thank you. Next is Sophie, followed by Dana.
Uh, my name is Sophie and I am a student at the University of Oregon. And also a member of Cascadia Action Network, which is a student organization. Um, this year we have felt the difference between air that is healthy to breathe or toxic to our bodies. We have watched the pipeline spill and the fires burn and we have seen these things happen during the hottest year on record, then hotter and hotter. If the pandemic has shown us one thing, it's that the crises we face cannot be separated. And that the impacts of climate change are hitting low income and historically marginalized communities hardest and first. In partnership and solidarity with many community groups in Eugene. We demand the transition of all utilities in the city to one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty. And a ban on construction of all new fossil fuel infrastructure here. This includes saying no to the Northwest Natural franchise decision in May. I also support the call for the city to levy a fee on Northwest Natural and other polluters to create a justice fund. That will channel money from corporate pockets back into the hands of people who need it the most ultimately. I want to add that the call for the city to stop the sweeps is deeply connected with these issues. And that the forced displacement of individuals who are already suffering the most as a result of climate change is a complete injustice. Especially in the winter of a global health crisis. The climate is reaching its breaking point and it's up to you to keep blocking the fossil fuel industry at every fork in the road. We don't want Northwest Natural selling fracked gas to our neighbors and calling it green. All up and down the West Coast, we owe it to each other to grow together and support the efforts of community members to keep all of us safe. We keep us safe and we will not stop demanding our city's transition to clean energy and an end to fracked gas in Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dana, followed by Haley.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for your continued dedication to the protection of companion animals in this community. Oh, sorry, my name is David Keenan. I'm in Ward Eight. Um, so thank you for your continued dedication, especially. Regarding the proposed language changes in section four point three three zero regarding abuse and neglect. Um, that hopefully lays out, you know, standards of care for people. Uh, keeping their animals and it's especially helpful for those living in houses or apartments, um. And that's, that's great. However, the proposed language change in this section could also lead to, lead to the unhoused individuals. Who have pets, uh, to be criminally charged for animal neglect in the second degree and to lose possession of their companions. Many unhoused individuals are living in their cars or in tents. And they've already had so many things taken away from them. They also don't deserve to have their pets taken away from them. This language should be rewritten to include the allowance around the failure to provide adequate shelter if the pet owner themselves is unhoused. This comment does not override my concern for unhoused individuals in this community and frankly, the living situations aren't good enough for animals. They're not good enough for people either. And I feel like it's unsurprising that we're here once again telling y'all that some of the changes that you're deciding to make. Are harmful to the unhoused community. I would really like to know who's at your decision-making tables when these proposed changes are written. That's a question I really do want an answer to, um, and another question I want you to think about is. Who do you include at your decision-making tables? Like, look around and see who's missing. Probably people from the unhoused community themselves or other historically marginalized communities. If those voices are missing, that's pretty problematic. And any of the solutions that you're going to come up with, like issues to affordable housing or protections for animals or homelessness or environmental justice issues will be lacking. Until you do include them. So, thank you for your time and, that was it.
Thank you. Next is Haley, followed by Jessie.
Hello, everyone. Um, hello, city council and Mayor Venice and city manager, city manager Midary. I'm Haley K. Scott and I'm the Climate Justice Grassroots Organizer with Beyond Toxicx and the N W A C P Eugene Springfield. Um, I'm a member of the Confederated Tribes of Sluts Indians and I've lived in the Eugene Springfield area for about six years now. Uh, thank you for allowing me to provide public comment today. Uh, I'm seeking your support on two pieces of upcoming legislation that I believe fall in line with the city of Eugene's climate action goals. And so we know that Black Indigenous and people of color are disproportionately impacted by climate change and environmental degradation. This is due to historic social, economic and racial inequities. And so the recent wildfires that took place in September twenty twenty are but one example of how frontline communities are impacted by climate change. And we can expect that extreme events like this will continue to increase in frequency and intensity. And we are going to experience increased levels of drought, extreme weather events, and that will lead to increased flooding and erosion. And all of these types of climate events, they have cascading effects. And so as Oregon and its people begin to address climate change. We need to ensure that the needs and priorities of frontline communities are centered in the decision-making process. To do this, all levels of government and state agencies in Oregon need to establish a clear path towards environmental and climate justice. And that is why I'm asking the city council to consider supporting Legislative Concept one eight nine four and House Bill two four eight eight. LC eighteen ninety-four, or the Environmental Justice for Oregon Joint Resolution. Establishes principles, lays a framework of shared values and lays the path forward for future policies. And practices based on the right to ethical, balanced, healthy and responsible uses of land and renewable resources for future generations. And so as we begin to rethink how we address climate change in the state and locally. We need to rethink how we use land for natural resources, public facilities and communities. We cannot address climate change without addressing the legacy of land use decisions that have failed many communities. And so I also urge the city council to consider supporting House Bill two four eight eight, the Equity and Climate and Land Use Bill. HB twenty-four eighty-eight, it directs the Land Conservation and Development Commission to establish statewide land use planning goals to address climate change and reduce emissions. And promote the participation of disadvantaged and historically underserved communities. Thank you, city council.
Thank you. Next is Jessie, followed by Sarah.
Hey, that's funny. Uh, Sarah's my mom's name anyways. Uh, Mayor Venice, uh, city councillor and city manager Midary. Thank you for providing me an opportunity to give testimony. My name is Jessie and I've lived in Ward One since I was three. I'm a member of Sunrise Eugene, a hub for national climate organization fighting for climate justice on the local, state and federal level. I'm here today to test, to testify in regards to the ongoing use and expansion of natural gas and other fossil fuel infrastructure in the city of Eugene. As the climate and ecological crisis worsens and the people least responsible bear the worst of the brunt. I believe, I believe it is of utmost importance for the city to be taking extensive measures. To eliminate its carbon emissions and provide for a transition to renewable energies. And ultimately a just transition beyond extractive energy altogether. We certainly can't get there without moving away from fossil fuels right now. As such, I expect the city of Eugene will meet the goals of the Climate Recovery Ordinance by the year twenty thirty. Councillors, you are faced with a unique opportunity to reimagine Eugene's energy future. In your efforts to renegotiate the city's franchise agreement with Northwest Natural. You have the opportunity to forge a path toward a tran- just transition in the city. You can use this opportunity to start a process completely to completely decarbonize the city. And equitably move our community into the new decade, or you can double down on the same old status quo that has brought us here. And so I ask, refuse to sign a new franchise agreement with Northwest Natural unless they agree to terms that put us on track to meet our CRO goals. And in line with the desire of the constituents that you serve. It is the city's legal and moral responsibility to do everything in its power to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions in line with the recommendations of the best available science. And invest in building climate resilient communities freed from. Reliance on fossil fuels. As such, I am requesting that the city council pass a series of ordinances. To mandate the transition of all utilities in the city to a hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty. Ban the construction of all new fossil fuel infrastructure in the city. Levy a fee on Northwest Natural and other climate polluters to create a fund to transition low income and historically marginalized communities. From back, fracked gas to electric appliances and to retrofit those homes to increase efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sarah, followed by B L M.
All right, can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Good evening, city council members and Mayor Venice. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the resolution condemning white supremacy. My name is Sarah Lamog and I am a resident of Ward Five. More importantly, I am a scholar of the rise in authoritarian regimes and genocide and for the past decade. And for the past decade, I have focused my studies on identifying dangerous patterns of social upheaval and have traveled to Poland and Bosnia to study firsthand where the unthinkable has happened. I am here raising grave concerns about the white supremacist extremists that still remain and are recruiting in Eugene. Please follow up with urgent action beyond just issuing a resolution. For starters, I urge you all to read the reports from the ACLED Project and Militia Watch that have documented the increasingly violent incidents in Eugene when white supremacists are involved in what begin as peaceful protests. Furthermore, Councilmember Clark has repeatedly demonstrated a pattern in public of being dangerously lenient with fascist domestic terrorists. His inability to unequivocally condemn white supremacy was evident during several occasions in a public forum. One, during the very recent January eleventh City Council meeting. Two, his vote against the first resolution to condemn white supremacy back in twenty nineteen. And three, a personal Facebook post he wrote on Election Day in twenty eighteen that questioned who was at fault for the anti-Semitic deadly shooting at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh. Although Councilmember Clark has since apologized for his war choice, it should be noted that his pattern of behavior of not vehemently denouncing white supremacy are steps that emboldened domestic terrorists to act so violently in the first place. The road to rectifying the inequity of police treatment between different racial groups is going to be long and arduous. But that work cannot be done with someone like Counselor Member Clark on the board, a person who has a track record of turning the cheek to white supremacy. So I urge the remaining council members to follow up their resolution with enforcing accountability through definitive action by reconsidering Clark's position on council and calling for his resignation. I yield back my time.
Thank you. It looks like BLM is no longer on the call, so Alex is next, followed by Tom.
Um, hi, yes, I am Alex Wood and I am here to testify with EG three fifty. I'm advocating for a transition away from natural gas and fossil fuels in our city. Um, it is important for our future that we make a change in the way we create energy. We need to choose a path that lowers the carbon emissions because they're becoming extremely dangerous, not only for the planet, but for our community. And we need to protect the planet and the animals and our own home. Uh, we need to work towards creating buildings with a better energy system like electric rather than going towards a gas way. Cause I know that Northwestern, uh, uh, Northwest Natural provides a lot of at-home services with gas that increases asthma and other health deficiencies. And fracking and other ways to get fossil fuel out of the ground provides methane in the air, which is very dangerous. It can make water contaminated and earthquakes can happen. And if we work towards a better, more environmentally friendly option, then there can be a increase in workforce and it can benefit low-income neighborhoods. And I urge you guys to not sign the new franchise agreement with Northwestern Network, I mean, Natural, and it is important for our planet and our future. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Next is Tom, followed by Deborah.
Councilor Venice, um, or Mayor Venice, Councillors, uh, I want to thank you for all you do for our community. Uh, my name is Tom Peck. I'm in Ward One and I am, uh, on the Finley Area Neighborhood Board and I'm also on the Neighborhood Leaders Council Board. And I'm one of the founding members and the Chair of the Eugene Wildfire Preparedness Coalition. Um, and I want to thank you, Councilor Groves, for, for your support. So, the wildfire coalition really is a, is a group of neighborhood associations, HOAs, and concerned individuals who really, uh, want to reduce the threat of wildfire in our community. Um, our mission is to, uh, to engage the energy of our, uh, uh, neighborhood associations with the City of Eugene, the Eugene Springfield Fire Department, and many other agencies to, again, reduce uh, the threat of wildfire. Um, our coalition, um, we provide education. We're, uh, we've done one fire forum uh, with Chief Heppel and Deputy Chief Linder and Tim Inglesby. We had a hundred and twenty people on the call. Uh, we're, uh, deep in grant writing to provide funding and resources for fire fuel reduction. Uh, we want to provide tools and training, uh, working with, um, uh, Oregon, uh, uh, university, State University Extension to provide training for individual neighbors so they can, uh, do their own, uh, defensible spaces. We would like to provide assistance to elderly, disabled, and low-income people who want to help. They need help reducing the fire fuel on their property. Um, and we want to, uh, prepare our neighborhoods, uh, for evacuation in the event of a wildfire entering our community, which, uh, we saw from last year, the danger is great. Um, we are working on a major grant proposal to do fire mitigation uh, with, uh, Northwest Youth Corps. It's an ODF, uh, grant. Uh, we want to start, uh, two projects, one in the South Hills of Eugene and the other in the Thurston Hills of Springfield, uh, you know, where the Holiday Farm Fire came very close to. So, uh, we.
Thank you. Your time has concluded. Next is Deborah, followed by Catherine. Deborah, please unmute. Okay, um, it looks like Deborah, um, is not on, so we're gonna go to um, actually, Tim is not there either. We're gonna go to Zia Wang. And Deborah, I'll come back to you.
It turned me on.
They're listening to you.
Yeah.
We can hear you now.
Thank you.
Go ahead and start.
This is my first time. My name is Deborah Tanner. I live, um, on the corner of, um, Olive Street and Eleventh Street. And, um, I'm asking for urgent help because my vehicle was impounded from, um, the closest street to my assisted-living, um, building. I'm wheelchair-bound. I'm pretty surgical. Uh, I'm hoping to be able to walk. Again, um, soon, my vehicle was reported by an individual as abandoned. At this time, parking, um, uh, it, it, it is not, um, is not picking up vehicles. Um, it, the only way that they're impounding is if someone reports it. I, I don't understand why. One person doesn't want my car parked in front of his apartment building is allowed to take my vehicle away from me. My car was legally parked, registered, and insured with a, excuse me, handicap placard properly displayed. It was impounded on December fourteenth. Parking services failed to notify me by mail. I average four to six medical appointments per month. I can only sit for one hour at a time. My. I was merely following the stay-at-home mandate, which contravenes the moving of vehicles every three days on a meter with a handicap placard. I believe that the stay-at-home mandate supersedes the parking restriction as I live in a building with a hundred and fifty-four residents, about seventy of which have cars which are parked similarly around the neighborhood. When I.
Thank you. Your time has concluded. Next, I apologize for the name.
Uh, can I just jump in for a second? Can we be sure that we have Deborah Tanner's contact information so we can follow up on that before she gets off the phone? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I will contact her.
I just sent a note to Sarah.
And Zia Wang, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, hi, I'm Zia. Thanks for your time. What happened at the DC on January sixth was not an accident. Those domestic terrorists and white supremacists were not suddenly showing up in DC. They came across the country and their power has been reinforced by local law enfor- uh, enforcements, protection, and the city's tolerance for decades. I want to follow up the email I sent to all of you about my firsthand witness experience on January ninth's Pro Trump rally. I was shocked to see how civilized EPD could be when they were working with violent white nationalists. As we all know, on July twenty-sixth last year, multiple EPD officers jumped on an unarmed fourteen-years-old girl, knocked her down to the ground, and arrested her brutally at the BLM protest, while allowing white nationalists assaulting another minor on a bicycle and didn't do anything. Chief Skinner said in a video statement on January four thirteenth, "We are unfortunately getting pretty good at this by referring to the BLM protest." This reflects the EPD's rooted racial bias, bias issue coming from the leadership who compared the racial equality justice movement with violent domestic terrorists at the Capitol Building. As the federal investigation continues, more and more law enforcement officers are being identified as a member of the mob that invaded the Capitol. Our community deserves to know if any EPD officers were present in the mob and the city needs to start an investigation, investigation between EPD and the local white nationalists. Counselor Clark needs to resign. He's not a safe person to serve the city when he posted publicly on his Facebook to support a local white supremacy-owned business but refused denouncing white supremacy's violence happening in DC. This isn't about the Republican versus Democrat. This is about the violent white supremacy. I'm glad for the city passing the resolution condemning white supremacy, but it's not enough. City Council needs to de- declare racism as a public health crisis in Eugene and putting to action to hold accountability in your work system is to call for Counselor Clark's resignation. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, really quick, Deborah, if you can hear me, can you please reply to the message in the chat? And next is Amy, followed by Sophia.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, uh, my name is Amy Okoseo Yakan. I'm the Environmental and Climate Justice Coordinator for the Eugene Springfield and NAACP branch. And I'm also an Environmental Studies and Planning graduate student at the University of Oregon. I'm eleven in Ward One. What do institutional inequality, climate change, and exclusionary land use have in common? This is not a rhetorical question. The answer is racism, white supremacy, and a culture of intolerance. Race and class-based discrimination have been embedded in the physical configuration of our built-in natural environments. I think of the Bethel and Trainsong communities in West Eugene who are surrounded by land zoned for heavy industrial usage. These communities have disproportionate exposure to air toxins, a higher percentage of low-income minority residents, high rates of self-reported childhood asthma, and less access to educational materials and less access to public decision-making processes. I think of the Black Ferry Street community just outside of Eugene city limits and how in the nineteen forties, Eugene used the power of eminent domain to force these people out and demolish their homes to make way for the construction of the Ferry Street Bridge. These are just a few examples I've learned about how land use decisions have hurt people in communities. And too often, race, color, and income status are the deciding factors of who shoulders the burden of these decisions. It also becomes increasingly clear how the economic and environmental inequities resulting from these decisions make these same communities more vulnerable to environmental change, including the climate crisis. Two pieces of legislation, LC eighteen ninety-four, Environmental Justice for Oregon, and HB two four eight eight Equity and Climate and Land Use, address the connections in historic social inequities, land use, and the climate crisis by reimagining the way local governments go about land use planning and development in a way that prioritizes the needs of historically underserved communities and addresses the climate change. The Eugene Sustainability Commission has already voted to pass a resolution in support of our bills and are now asked that the Eugene City Council stand with the NAACP Eugene Springfield and Portland Branch as well as Beyond Toxicx and support our legislation and help us usher in a future, help us usher in a future of climate justice for Oregon. Because I, as a Black woman, am quite frankly exhausted of having to fight two concurrent crises, the crisis of climate and the crisis of racism at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sophia, followed by Deb.
Hello, um, thank you for providing me this opportunity for public testimony. My name is Sophia Trotter and I live in Ward Two and I'm testifying on behalf of the Fossil Free Eugene Coalition. We are part of a growing movement in Eugene and across the region advocating for a just transition to renewable energy. First, I want to thank you as an individual. I appreciate the work you've done to let people stay in their camps. I also want to note that this past week, the Sustainability Commission passed a resolution in support of our campaign. And I'd like to thank you for your consideration and your tireless work on behalf of our community. So I'm a young person and I have particular stake in the future and for all the many reasons already mentioned by people before me, I am extremely worried. I love the land and people here in Eugene and I really believe Eugene could be a leader for the climate crisis and that is why I'm here today. Homes and buildings consume nearly forty-three percent of all energy in Oregon and cause about one-third of the state's climate pollution. The second-largest source of climate pollution after the transportation sector. This comes from gas burned in furnaces, water heaters, stoves, and dryers. And not only is transitioning to renewables imperative to meeting our climate goals, but it would also give, provide benefits for our local economy, public health, and safety and mark a first step for Eugene to combat environmental injustices in our community. We support you to reimagine Eugene's energy future and to renegotiate the city's franchise agreement with Northwest Natural. And we support you to use this opportunity to start a process to completely decarbonize our city and equitably move our community into the new decade. I would just like to say there is nothing natural about fracked gas and Northwest unnatural can no longer be allowed to hold our city's climate policy hostage. I ask that our city refuses to sign a new franchise agreement with Northwest Natural unless they agree to terms that put us on track to meet our CRO goals and are in line with the desire of the constituents that you serve. Um, and I'm here to echo the, the demands of this coalition, which are to mandate the tradition, the transition of all utilities in the city to one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty, ban the construction of all new fossil fuel infrastructure in the city, and levy a fee on Northwest Natural and other climate polluters to create a fond transition, low-income, and historically marginalized communities from frack gas to electric appliances and to retrofit these homes to increase efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Deb, followed by Kelsey. Deb, please unmute.
I hope, I hope I'm unmuted now, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Deb McGee. I volunteer with three fifty Eugene. Uh, Eugene's been my city, but I live in the county the last forty years. Happy twenty twenty-one. I hope you hear what I say. We gotta make it better by living a new way. I know you have a lot of problems on your plate, revenue shortfalls, unhoused neighbors, racist violence, and hate. But the one biggest problem that overarches all our issues, it's the part per million. They're heating up our tissues. We gotta stop burning fossils. Over forty cities did it. It's the Green New Deal. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. Come on Eugene, get off the gas. It's so in the past. Sustainable, clean energy. That's how it's gotta be. Northwest quote "natural" says they'll give us renewable gas. Now that's a pipe dream. They're blowing smoke in our glass. Maybe, maybe, baby, renewable up to maybe twenty percent. Expanding fracked gas, that is their real intent. You, the elected, to protect and to serve. Be bold, be fierce, steel your nerve. Say no more gas to Northwest Natural. That'll reduce Eugene's greenhouse gas emissions and you know, that's factual. We got your backs. Be climate she and heroes. Tipping points in seven years, that's not much time, you know? So stop the expansion of gas. Stop the climate pollution. Let's roll up our sleeves and together, then we will find the solutions. Thank you and happy new year.
Thank you. I wanted to check in with Mike McFarland. You had your hand raised, did you still wanna speak? Please unmute.
Right there, hey, hey, everybody, how you doing? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Mike McFarland. Um, I'm in Ward four and I'm here, um, to talk to you about the Riverkeeper. But, um, I had this great speech all set up and then some breaking news came up and I gotta tear it up and talk to you about something else. Um, I understand that there's a, there's, uh, Counselor Simple, um, uh, has, uh, announced the, um, the, the camp, the camp camping modifications and which includes, um, uh, the Riparian Zone. And, um, that is great news. I just can't, we cannot thank you enough for that. But, um, I wanted to see if we can take it a little further, folks. And maybe we never ever allow camping in the Riparian Zone again. We're not talking about a big, big area here. What we're talking about is twenty-five feet off the water um, and probably our more, our most, um, precious, uh, real estate in our city. There's no reason that we should be building homes on it, camp, we shouldn't do anything on it. Because it, there's, it's, as we're seeing right now, it's not a safe place to be. And, and I, I, I really encourage each one of you to think about the next time we say it's okay again. And, and, and maybe this is the last time that we allow, um, allow this. Okay, I've got an update for twenty twenty. Um, the, uh, Riverkeeper, um, eliminated a hundred and ninety-eight yards of trash. Um, that's, that's sixty-six pickup loads full of trash that didn't go in the river. Um, and you know what? Here's the sad part, folks, we only got about half of it. Um, in twenty twenty, it's, in twenty twenty-one, we're, we have not been able, because of COVID restrictions, et cetera, been able to do a cleanup for two months. Now that might not sound a lot to you, but as we see the, the camps being underwater and, 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 um, and becoming, um, part of the river, um, this is the worst year the river has had in years. So we're gonna continue to partner with the city and we're gonna thank, um, uh, Mayor Venice for coming out with us in February. We got, had an open pandemic and didn't get a chance to formally thank you. But, um, but, um, let's keep that in mind, is that, you know?
Thank you, your time has concluded. Next is Kelsey, followed by Maddie.
Hi, can everyone hear me? Great. Um, Mayor Venice, City Councilor and City Manager Madari, thank you for providing me an opportunity to give testimony. Uh, my name is Kelsey Savor, I live in Ward one and I'm speaking on behalf of the Sunrise Eugene Movement. I'm here today to testify in regards to the ongoing use and expansion of natural gas and other fossil fuel infrastructure in the city of Eugene. While I'm speaking on behalf of myself for this testimony, I bring my perspective from several community leadership roles as to the importance of making new decisions, charting new paths and ultimately making commitments in the present that will make our community proud in the future. As a member of the Sustainability Commission and current Chair of the Downtown Neighborhood Association, we have been evaluating and reimagining our processes, policy issues and legacies, both intentional and unintentional, and asking how we can course correct moving forward. In my mind, City Council renegotiating our franchise agreement with Northwest Natural is just one more iteration of the work already being undertaken by boards, commissions and associations across the city, daring to think beyond the status quo and asking how we can better uphold the social contract of what it means to live responsibly in this community. To this end, the Sustainability Commission recently voted in favor of a commission resolution in support of the Sunrise Eugene recommendations. I urge the City Council to notice and honor the will of so many young people who continue to ask for all necessary action to eliminate greenhouse gas emissions and consider renegotiating our franchise agreement with Northwa- with Northwest Natural as a vital step towards doing so. Thank you so much for your time and for your service.
Thank you, next is Maddie, followed by Selena.
Hello. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today. My name is Maddie Carduna and I'm a senior at South Eugene High School, as well as one of the schools, the leader of the school's environmental club. I'm here to testify today about the city's, city of Eugene's continued consumption and amplification of fossil fuels and natural gas. As a young person, the future of my planet is my future. And as the climate crisis continually worsens, I consider it to be more important now than ever to put in focus and effort into eliminating carbon emissions and transitioning to renewable energy in the city of Eugene. It is your responsibility as the city government to protect and do what is in the best interest of the people you serve. For that reason, I ask that you take this opportunity to, to think of a new future for Eugene, a future without fossil fuels. We must transition to electricity to power buildings and businesses in order to most effectively reduce greenhouse gas emissions in our city. Repowering our buildings to run on clean, high-efficiency electric appliances instead is key to stemming the world's impacts of climate change and doing the, this work can support the communities everywhere. Thanks to Oregon's abundance of clean, low-cost electricity, swapping out gas appliances for electric ones is a huge climate win, reducing the average climate footprint of a household by fifty percent, the equivalent to giving up your car. Environmental justice injustice is rampant in our community and across the globe. Transitioning to renewable energy is a huge step in reversing these injustices. It imply, it provides economic benefits and improves public health and safety. Gas leaks frequently cause evacuations and disruptions to businesses and individuals in Eugene. Last year in January twenty twenty, a gas leak caused portions of Lamont Street to shut down and forced parents to pick up their children from daycare. That is less than a mile from my school. We were in danger of being evacuated from our school as well. I urge you to renegotiate the franchise agreement with Northwest Natural in order to make the transition to renewable energy. We are relying on you and your leadership to make the decision that benefits our community. I request that you mandate the transition of all utilities in the city of Eugene to one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty, ban construction of all fossil fuel infrastructure in the city of Eugene and levy a fee on Northwest Natural and other climate polluters to create a fund to transition low-income and historically marginalized communities from fracked gas. I also request that you stop the sweeps of homeless camps in Eugene and find out a way to properly address the issue of homelessness in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Selena, followed by Lydia.
Hi. My name is Selena Blick and I'm here today with three fifty Eugene and our Fossil Free Eugene Coalition. I'm here again to testify in regard to the ongoing use and expansion of fracked gas infrastructure in Eugene. I won't waste your time listing out the pillars of our demands because I know you've heard them many, many times. Today, I am just here to say, we are here to support you in standing up to Northwest Natural. We are here to support you in standing up for the health of our city and our planet. And we will keep commenting and keep emailing you and keep meeting with you until we see you take action in support of our demands. I also want you to know that we're not dumb or naive. We know that contract negotiations are complicated and that meeting our demands won't be so simple. We know that you have a lot of other things on your plate. But the thing is, this is the future of our planet that we're talking about. It's kind of important. And the reason that we're even in this mess today is because politicians of the past thought that acting on climate change was too hard, too complicated, not urgent enough. So are you going to keep making the same mistake of those who came before you? I really hope not. I really hope you take this seriously. And yeah, it's not gonna be easy, but it is definitely going to be worth it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lydia, it looks like your hand raised and it's unraised. I'm checking in to see if you wanted to speak.
Yeah, I'm ready. Mayor Venice. Mayor Venice, City Councilor and City Manager Madari, thank you for providing this opportunity for my public testimony. My name's Lydia and I'm a middle-schooler in Eugene. I live in Ward two. Ever since I was young, I have skied with my dad and sister. We normally ski at Willamette Pass because it is so close to Eugene. My older sister is four years older than me and we don't have a lot in common, so it's related to spend days skiing with her. In some recent years, Willamette Pass has not been open to the public because of lack of snow. I'm worried that in the future, I won't be able to ski as much as the winters consistently get warmer. Fossil fuels are a big contributor to climate change and climate change has a large impact on snow levels. Eugene must meet its climate recovery ordinance goals by twenty thirty. Northwest Natural can no longer be allowed to hold our city's climate, climate policy hostage. We are at crossroads in our small town, looking to you for leadership. And so I ask, refuse to sign a new franchise agreement with Northwest Natural unless they agree to terms that put us on track to meet our climate recovery ordinance goals and in line with the desire of the people that you serve. I also request that the City Council passes a series of ordinance two, mandate the transition of utilities in the city to one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty, ban the construction of all new fossil fuel infrastructure in the city, and levy a fee on Northwest Natural and other climate polluters, create a fund to transition low-income and historically marginalized communities from fracked gas to electric appliances and to retrofit these homes to increase efficiency. Thank you for your consideration, for your tireless work on behalf of our community.
Thank you. And Mayor, that concludes the public forum for those who signed up prior to the seven thirty-five deadline.
Thank you so much and I'm sorry to the last two folks who signed up that you didn't quite make it on the line. I was impressed at how quickly people did walk through there and I was hoping we'd hear it from everyone, so I'm sorry for those last two. Looks like Counselor Cyret would speak to some of the comments, so Counselor Cyret, I turn it to you.
Thank you, uh, thanks everyone who came to speak, um, and joined in our public forum. We really appreciate hearing from you. Just gonna comment on a few select things, um, regarding the proposed rule, or excuse me, the changes to our criminal code. You know, we, we put those proposed rules or criminal code changes out for public comment for exactly this reason. Um, because our staff can't possibly think of every possible, um, consequence to, um, a proposed rule. So we wanna hear, what did we miss? Uh, what's the public support for these changes? What, uh, we're gonna learn about things we don't know about potential un- unattended impacts. Um, so we appreciate, uh, the, the feedback that we're getting about those, um, possible changes to the criminal offense offenses. They're not changed yet, they're out for public comment. Um, there are parts of that, uh, those proposed changes that are being made to bring us in alignment with state rules and I don't know how many of those affect the pieces around animal care, but, um, we will ask staff more about that when we have, um, our work session on that topic. I also want to appreciate the testimony, asking us support the House resolution and the Senate bill that's moving, um, that will move our state towards a more equitable one in terms of land use decisions, among other things that were mentioned. I serve on our in- intergovernmental relations, um, committee, which works with staff to kind of look at the bills that are up at the legislature and decide, help, uh, be- before we bring to recommendations to council, decide which ones we might support, oppose, actively support and I'll certainly ask staff about those two pieces. Um, and, uh, you know, in terms of concerns about our local law enforcement being involved with, um, white supremacy, um, you know, I will say we did ask, Counselor Keating and I both asked the Chief of Police directly if he knew if any of our officers had engaged in activities in the Capitol on the sixth and at that point, he said he was not aware of any, but that if he had learned of that, um, they would be investigated and disciplined up to and including termination if they had violated, uh, city policy or, um, or the law. And then, uh, I, uh, appreciate the comments about my dog. He's actually a large breed rat terrier and one of his parents is a Decker rat terrier, which is a, uh, recognized breed developed by the Decker family out in Alvidore-Vanita area, um, which did, uh, in, uh, include Basindi mixed into the breed, so that's why he looks a little like a Basindi.
Thank you for that canine, uh, genealogy description. Yeah, uh, all right. I have Counselor Keating and then Counselor Yay.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Counselor Cyret touched on a lot of things I was, I was gonna talk, talk about, uh, in particular, uh, House Bill twenty-four eighty-eight. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. As a member of the IGR, intergovernmental relations committee, I look forward to, uh, partnering with Counselor Evans and Counselor Cyret, uh, in that regard and exploring how, uh, how it aligns with our values and, and we could support, uh, equity and land use planning. Uh, and, uh, uh, in regards to pets, uh, to Ozzy, future, future mayor, future city counselor Ozzy, uh, please tell Squeaky and Fluffy that Vegas, the Great Dane says hello. Uh, and you might have, uh, one heck of a future race on your hands 'cause Lydia from Ward two, future city counselor, uh, uh, you know, I, I appreciate the, the boldness of the next generation of leaders stepping up. Um, uh, middle-schoolers, uh, advocating, uh, passionately to save our planet. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. It's, it's, uh, it's inspiring, uh, beyond words. Um, thank you to the Earth Guardians three fifty, speaking of the youth movement and sunrise movement, uh, for your, your, your testimony and, and your, your poignant and powerful observations. And, uh, the Riverkeepers, um, never allowing camping in the Riparian Zone, uh, is, is, is something that stands out in tonight's testimony. Uh, thank you to the Riverkeepers for what you do. Uh, Mike, I know you're a Ward four resident, uh, but please, uh, be sure to include this Ward two counselor uh, for the next safe, social distance river cleanup. I'd be happy to put on my, my, my water-wading boots and, uh, and come on out and, and, and help you all. Thanks to everyone who, who stepped up, testified tonight. Uh, David Monk, uh, Ward two, uh, resident. Uh, uh, thank you for the, the offline conversation about a potential work session for, uh, fire readiness and I applaud, uh, Counselor Grove's enthusiasm for getting behind that work as well. Uh, perhaps that's a, a city and county collaborative conversation. Uh, but however it unfolds, uh, I, I, I look forward to seeing what council can do to, uh, double down on readiness, uh, educating our, our citizenry and determining what, uh, revenue sources exist, uh, to support, uh, fire resilience. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Yay and then Counselor Evans.
Thanks, I, I was actually gonna comment on what Claire said also, but since the city attorney is here, I thought I'd ask. Um, my understanding is that the rules around animals is getting us in alignment with state laws. I think that's what your email told me, I just wanted to verify that for folks.
That is correct. It were, there were changes made, um, in two thousand and thirteen. Um, so it would be making them, it's the definitions and some of the other changes. But, uh, as Counselor Cyret noted, you, there, there's no legal requirement particularly regarding these types to do it. So it's still, you can have some differences, so it's up for conversation if you want to not make some of those changes because of some of these, um, unanticipated consequences, that is absolutely within your authority to do. But that's what it was doing, was bringing it consistent with state law.
Great, I wanted folks to know that, um, we did have options and we really appreciate all the feedback that we've gotten. Like Claire said, we, we really do care what people think and, and that's why we put this out there. Um, I also wanted to, to touch on what Counselor Keating said. I noticed we had a lot of youth here today, both middle school and high school. Um, and it is very encouraging to see, you know, our next generation being involved in a way I would never have considered, um, as a middle-schooler when I was younger. Um, and I wonder if this Zoom platform is making it easier for folks of our younger generations to interact. And, um, I know we've alre- we've already talked about the option of being able to use this platform into the future, even when we're able to meet face-to-face and I think this increased, um, participation by, by young people is a real good reason why we should keep, still keep that in mind and, and look how, look for how we can do that. Because they don't have cars and the buses, I take the bus a lot at night and I know it's harder to get down to council, so thanks so much.
Thank you. Counselor Evans and then Counselor Zelenka.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Tonight, a number of people made comments specifically towards the racial issues that we have going on in this country and also in this community. One of the things I'd like to say about that is this, since I've been here for thirty-five years, before I came here, people said that Oregon was a great place. There wasn't any discrimination. Racism didn't exist. When I got here, I found out differently. I would walk down the street, people would roll down their windows of their cars and call me the N-word or throw garbage at me. All of my children, who have grown up here in first grade, they knew, they, they were called nigger, right? So how do you explain to a five or a six-year-old what a nigger is? And understand that that is the first experience that they have with understanding or being taught that there's something less than in this community. It's hap, it happened all the way from, from grade school through high school. And I know because, you know, my sons would go play football and they would experience those same kind of comments from other schools in this area. When my daughter came home and asked me that question, I had a real hard time, like I did with my boys, explaining what that was about and that those people were ignorant and they didn't know you, understand you or anything else. You know. I can't begin to tell you just half of the stuff that I've gone through or my family has gone through in this community. And it didn't just start here. When I grew up in Ohio, similar, same thing would happen. You know, you go, you, you drive through the wrong community, the cops would stop you. If you went across the wrong street, there would be a fight. This is the stuff that continues to go on. And like I, I, I had a conversation with a couple of my friends a, a, a couple, few months ago about what was going on this past summer. And they said, okay, let's see how long this lasts. Because we know that a lot of white people can't hold their attention on anything for very long. So, you know, take that for what it's worth.
Thank you, Counselor Evans, for very sobering comments. Counselor Zelenka and then Counselor Clark.
Yeah, thank you for saying that, Greg. I, we do have racism in Eugene. And, and it's pretty significant. I have both just blatant racism that Greg is talking about and institutional racism. And the stories and incidents that I have heard, being a councillor over the last fourteen years curls, curl the hair on the back of your neck and make me sick to the, it's in the stomach. It's just awful stuff that people have and hatred that they have. But I did want to comment about a couple of people that we're talking about, Counselor Clark. And I have served on council with Counselor Clark for fourteen years and I have never heard him be in support of white supremacy. And I do not consider him a racist. You may not like what he says or the way he says it, but that's different. So I, I've appreciated Mike's different perspective than mine over the years, but I don't consider him a racist or a supporter of white supremacy.
Thank you. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Counselors Zelenka. I appreciate that more than you know. More than I can say. Thank you, sir. Greg, I, Counselor Evans, I, I can't begin to imagine the things you've gone through in our community and, and I'm, I appreciate your, the strength of your words very much. To Ben and to Sarah and to Zia, I, I would, I understand the strength of your passion around the issue of race. It's, it's warranted. It's understandable. The only thing I can say is I would invite you to, to watch last Wednesday's council meeting and, and hear what I said. And judge for yourself whether or not you think, what you think the sincerity of my heart is with that. And I appreciated what Sarah said with regard to ACLED and, and, and the, and the work that she's done to inform herself. And I'd invite her to send me a note so that I might learn a little bit more too. So. I, I appreciated those who came to speak tonight and, and thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you, everyone who, Greg, Counselor Evans, your hand is up again. Do you want another comment? Take it away.
Before we sign off, one of the things I wanted to address, the same as Counselors Zelenka, was Counselor Clark. And I've known Mike Clark for a number of years, more than ten years. And I do not consider him a racist. He's a conservative, but conservative does not equal racist. There are a lot of liberal racists in this community and across the country. And we may not agree with all of our points all of the time and may not agree with Counselor Clark's perspective. But this is a free country and he has a right to say what he wants to say that reflects some of the concerns that his constituency has. And I understand that. We have to be able to get along with other people whose views we don't agree with. My, my family was, has been in politics for many years. And my godfather was Mayor of Cleveland. And he had to deal with a whole lot of different people. There were a whole lot of white people that did not want to see him elected in sixty-seven. But he knew how to deal across ideological and political boundaries to get things done. And so when we shut other people off, we shut off just conversation, but we shut off solutions. So I will say this, you know, Mike is a good man. And, you know, I have no problem with Mike Clark. Maybe I have a problem with some things he says, but as a person, he's a good person. So take that for what it's worth.
Thank you very much, Counselor Evans. Thank all of you. We are working our way through profound challenges as a community and as a nation. And we, we, it, these are, these are hard, hard issues. They're hard transitions. We're, we are facing up to a history of racism. We're facing climate change. We're facing homelessness. We're not going to solve all these overnight, but I am incredibly grateful to this council and also to staff and to all of the people who take the time to testify and support community work and become involved in organizations like the Earth Guardians Three Fifty and Three Fifty Eugene and all of the other folks who testify. So thank you all very much for being here. And we have one more item of business before we adjourn this meeting. And so I'm gonna turn that last, turn to that last item now. And Manager, do you want to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's sort of, I'm sorry, we can't end on that note and that we still have another work item, but it's an important one because it has to do with the Toxic Board, which is very relevant to all of tonight's conversations. So I'm gonna turn it over to James Lynn Hart to just give you a brief introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Venice and Counselors. I will be quick so everybody can get on with their evening. So the Toxic Board, as you have seen in your AIS, that we are, we have some vacancies on our board and it has, at this juncture, hampered the business of the board. And we are running into some hard deadlines at this time of year where the board needs to meet together virtually to, to prep their recommendations for the fees for this next year to keep the program in operation and also to finalize the annual report and some things like that. But we are below our, our amount of board members to reach quorum. So they cannot complete that area of business. We've still been able to manage within the program to do the work that we need to do. As we knew, we know that there's the situation that we're in with the pandemic has, has made things, you know, much more difficult for even you guys to get your things done because of just the complications of it all. So what we are requesting and looking at is currently, if our, we have one previous, previous board member who is eligible to have a second term. And if the, if the council would be willing to reappoint her to the board, that would allow us to function as we continue our, our recruitment process to gain the extra, or to fill the extra vacancies that we have. It is, it is a challenge to fill the board because of some of the requirements we have. We are working on options to see if there are some ways we can ease that in the future. But it is challenging because certain things are mandated within the charter. One of the things that is mandated in the charter that is not expressed in the AIS is that there, it is required technically that we fill any vacancy within two months of that vacancy happening. Well, that has not happened. And in reality, it's been a struggle we've had before my time with the program. Because again, some of the requirements that are there, but we are looking at, are there some things that maybe we can present to you, the council, of changes that maybe can happen down the road, but it's, none of them are a light lift. So we are trying to prepare that for you, but in, as to address our situation right now is to reappoint Crystal Abrams to the position that she had on the board, which would allow us to function in the meantime.
Thank you very much. I think we have actually a motion on the table to do just that, to meet your, your immediate needs for membership. And so I'm gonna just turn to, to three Yay.
Thank you. So I move to reappoint Crystal Abrams to the right-to-know advocacy position on the Toxic's Board, effective immediately for the remainder of a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Any discussion of that? All in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Excellent. That passes. Thank you so much. So congratulations to Crystal, if she's paying attention. And then I think in support of your need to continue to find applicants and candidates for those remaining posts, we have another motion to put on the table. And Counselor Yay, do you have a copy of that with you? No.
Did we have another motion? Is that a machine?
Possible. I have a text of a motion that was provided to me about directing the city manager to conduct a recruitment. Is somebody having, I, I can.
Make a motion.
I can read that motion.
Counselor Yay, I emailed that to you this afternoon.
Sorry, I was in meetings most of today. I didn't see it. So I, are we just ma, are we just asking the city manager to start a process to, of recruitment for the Toxic's Board?
For the remaining vacancies, yes.
So I move for the city manager to create a recruitment process for the Toxic's Board for the remaining open seats.
Second. Any questions or clarifications needed on that? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and that passes. Thank you very much. Thank you, James, for waiting for a long time to be able to make that presentation and for making it clear to us what the challenges are. And thank you all for a, for a good evening of meetings and get a good night's rest.
I'd just like to point out our streak of lean animals vote still.
Yeah, no, that's good. All right. Good night, everyone. We are adjourned.